City Council approves a plan to save a north side landmark. A suspect wanted on a Canada-wide warrant surrenders to police. And the Senate releases details of the Pamela Wallen audit.
Good evening and thank you for joining us. A historic city building that looked destined for the wrecking ball will now be repaired.
Just last month, the owner of the Lyceum Theatre was ordered to fix up the place or demolish it immediately. But now, a study of the building has determined it's not falling apart as quickly as once believed. Dennis Ward has more.
It hasn't even been a month since notices were posted on the Lyceum Theatre to fix it up or tear it down. Those orders were based on a report from roughly a year ago that determined the building should come down within 12 months. But the city now has a new engineering study that says things aren't that bad. Council has decided to make some repairs to save the century-old building.
There is a problem with the roof. Part was going to be replaced, and so we're going to work on that in the next few months. But once we stop the water from coming in there, the rest can be cleaned up. Inside, it's a terrible mess in terms of mold and things like that, but that can be cleaned up. But we have to prevent the water from getting in there, so we've got to repair the roof. And so that's basically the direction we're taking.
While the lyceum is hardly in great condition, it is structurally sound and not unsafe. The private owner, who has been unreachable, currently owes more than $95,000 in back taxes. The city will try again to contact him before any work is done.
We're going to place orders on the owner directing under the Property Standards Act that he repair this building. If he fails to comply, then we will move forward and we'll do this work ourselves, and we will send him a bill. If he fails to pay the bill, we will put the cost on the taxes.
If the taxes remain unpaid, the lyceum will be available in the 2014 tax sale. Hebert feels the property could be attractive if the proposed event center goes in right across the street. The waterfront district BIA, which has been concerned about the condition of the building for years, also feels it could be reused.
Whether it's repaired and brought up to standard and sold, or whether the facade is saved, or whatever happens, that it does contribute positively in a positive way to the downtown, and then it does not remain in the condition that it is in currently for any length of time.
Dennis Ward, TBT News.
Unlike many other communities, Thunder Bay will not be limiting the number of animals pet owners can have. Councillor Aldo Roberto was calling for a report on restricting the number of cats or dogs a person could keep in their home. While there was some support for the idea, there was also harsh criticism. Jonathan Wilson has more.
According to Councillor Aldo Roberto, the hoarding of animals in Thunder Bay is becoming a big issue. He feels the majority of pet owners are loving and caring, but he's received complaints about people with 25 to 30 animals. And that's perfectly fine here, as no bylaw exists restricting the number of pets a person can have. But not everyone thought there is a need for a restriction either, including Mayor Keith Hobbs.
Where do we draw the line? Some people like pets as they're children because they can't have children. And there's some families that have 16 children. So are we going to start legislating how many children are in a household? Sorry, Councillor Roberto, I totally disagree with this. I think it's a waste of time.
Roberto believes a bylaw would protect pets, the public, and the owners, some of whom he says have mental illnesses. City staff say rules are in place to deal with problems with people and pets.
Whether that's noise, odor, whatever the case may be, we can deal with those. It's also not possible to legislate away mental illness. So hoarders and that sort of thing, these problems won't go away just because we put in place a bylaw saying, "Don't hoard," or don't have 50 cats.
Roberto's idea to look at pet restrictions was shot down in a tight six-to-five vote. Another bylaw that came forward did get full support from council. The Thunder Bay Regional Hospital is looking to put an end to smoking on its property. Senior staff are asking council to amend the existing smoking bylaw to include the hospital.
We don't plan to be insane about it. We have a start date. It was chosen for a particular reason. We don't suddenly expect on October the 1st that this is going to be a non-smoking area. We're not blinding ourselves to the reality of this. As you say, it's an addictive illness.
Council will get a report back next month on the idea. The hospital would like to find people between $200 and $250. Jonathan Wilson, TBT News.
Council last night also discussed problems with housing for one segment of the city's population. A new report recommends 19 steps that can be taken to improve access to housing for people with substance use issues. Tara Alair has that story.
The Drug Strategy Accommodation Needs Assessment includes 10 short-term priority recommendations that would see people with substance abuse issues accessing the accommodation and support they need. It recommends the creation of a long-term Housing First program in Thunder Bay. Thunder Bay's Drug Strategy Coordinator Cynthia Olson says Housing First was pioneered in New York and has proven successful in several large Canadian cities.
Housing First is saying, "I'm going to give you a house, no strings attached, but I'm going to make sure that there are services and supports that are available that can be a wraparound. They may be health services, they may be outreach services, but it's going to be tailored to your needs, and you're going to direct what you think your needs are." So it's important that we address housing as far as the drug strategy is concerned because it is a significant risk factor for substance use both ways.
The report also calls for the expansion of existing shelter programming, an enhancement of residential rehabilitation services, and an increase in transitional housing. City Manager Tim Camiso praised the report but touched on its cost. Camiso says federal and provincial support is needed to make the expensive proposal a reality.
You can't just assume that there's going to be savings in the delivery that can somehow get plowed back because at the end of the day, it's a vicious circle. And again, as a municipality, we are prepared to be a part of this, but it's at the federal level and also the provincial level. I think the provincial would say that they're engaged where the fundamental issue relies with respect to the fact we're dealing with a human service here. We're dealing with something that is broader than any one municipality's capacity to deal with, and we do need to work at different levels of government to try to address this problem.
Tara Alair, TBT News.
Thunder Bay Police are looking to bring their cruisers up to date. At today's Police Services Board meeting, a proposal for new onboard laptop computers was on the table, but a previous plan to install body cameras on police uniforms is now on hold. Courtney Rutherford reports.
It's a device that's commonly found in households. It looks like a laptop but built to provide frontline officers with a faster way when it comes to dealing with calls.
They're able to pull up any history if they're dispatched to a domestic violence call, they're able to pull up any history on the house, whether there's been history of domestic violence, whether there's been weapons calls to the house. So it's an officer safety issue. It also ties in with our GPS system for tracking the cruisers, which again is an efficiency thing, as well as an officer safety issue.
The 25 laptops that would be installed come in at close to $90,000. The current equipment needs to be replaced, but the Thunder Bay Police have to wait until the city's approval before moving forward.
Well, we have a policy within the city purchasing department that anything to do with a sole source over a certain amount of money has to seek approval of council because we want to make certain that we are in line with our policies and procedures. So we're just following that, and this is one instance in my experience on the Police Services Board where this has come, and we just have to follow the city procedures.
The body cams that were brought up at a meeting earlier in the year will be put on hold for a while. Video storage has proven to be an issue, and the force is looking further into whether or not they in fact are beneficial. Meanwhile, the police board also agreed to provide $5,000 to develop a film project that introduces the Aboriginal community.
The work of the Anti-Racism Committee and others has certainly recognized that there's not as great an understanding of the Aboriginal community in the broader community as we would like. Understanding one another reads better relationships, and that's our interest.
The premiere is expected to take place at the auditorium this January. Courtney Rutherford, TBT News.
Thunder Bay man, who was the subject of a Canada-wide warrant, has surrendered to police. The arrest warrant for 62-year-old Arthur Joseph Lyons was first issued back on August 2nd. He finally turned himself in yesterday afternoon after having a third party contact police. Officers took him into custody a short time later at a south side location. Lyons is facing charges of sexual assault, sexual interference, and breach of probation. He made a preliminary court appearance earlier today.
The Thunder Bay Public Library is looking to make some major changes and is looking for the public's help in guiding it along the way. The library had just released a new strategic plan, but before finalizing the document, they're looking for input that will result in a big increase in the use of the library service. Cheryl Holmes has more.
Lifelong learning, economic support, and fostering the well-being of a community. Those are the three key points of Thunder Bay Public Library's new strategic plan. It's a plan that also aims to embrace change and innovation within the library and amongst its users.
There's a direction there around social inclusion and diversity, which means we want more and different kinds of people using the service in the future.
Right now, 40% of Thunder Bay residents use the library. Peyton hopes the strategic plan will help increase those numbers to as high as 60 or even 80%. Currently, over 75% of library users are women, and the majority of those users are 30 to 54 years old. A community action panel will be formed by the year's end to get input on what changes should be made to make the service more attractive.
There's been good levels of engagement, lots of interest. The library service is highly used and highly valued by the community, and the fact we're giving them more control over where it goes in the future has been very well received.
Everything is good for change, right? Because the city is changing a lot, lots of things are coming up, and I think that the library should have a good part in the changing thing.
Input, that's what it's all about, yeah. Like I said, the only change I can take up is on Sunday. Other than that, it's good. I'm satisfied with the library service.
The Strategic Action Plan will be carried out until 2016. Copies of the plan and the community panel application form are available online and at any library location throughout the city. Cheryl Holmes, TBT News.
Fort William Historical Park and the M&amp;R are trying to determine what animal's responsible for the death of some of the livestock at the fort. The incidents have forced the tourist attraction to take extra measures in order to protect their farm animals. The days of running free across the pasture unsupervised are over for these animals. The predator has claimed four sheep and seven chickens so far and is still on the loose, and there is only speculation as to what it might be. Employees at the fort discovered the aftermath of the first attack near the end of July. A week later, the animal struck again. Since then, they've been keeping a close eye on their animals and locking them up at night.
We've had bear sightings here this year. Over the years, we've had wildlife coming. It could be foxes, it could be large birds. We really don't know, but we are working with the people that do know and the agencies that are responsible for this and professionals in this area.
The investigation will continue until the predator is caught or leaves the area.
The North Shore Steelhead Association has begun working to rehabilitate a small local brook trout creek. George Creek was heavily impacted during the construction of Centennial Park. The result has been a significant loss in the spawning productivity and available fish habitat. Project Manager Frank Edgson says they want to return the stream to its natural design. Once complete, it will offer fish refuge for high and low water situations in the current river. Says the project is a great way to educate the general public on the importance of small creeks.
What we're attempting to do is to dig out the substrate that's currently in the stream and to replace it with smaller rock and more substrates that are appropriate to brook trout. It's overgrown, it's filled in with organic materials, and we're going to sort of repair that. We'll build some pools and riffles and natural bends and meanders and have it look more like a brook trout stream.
Construction began yesterday and is scheduled to be complete by the end of this month. Anyone interested in helping with the project can visit the North Shore Steelhead Association's website or contact Frank Edgson.
Other a part of everyday life and in just about any electronic device you can think of, the 16th Annual Semiconductor Conference is being held here in Thunder Bay this week, and people from across Canada are attending. More than 100 professors, researchers, and industry partners are in the city, sharing research and building new relationships. It's the hope that this conference will bring new high-tech commercial opportunities to Thunder Bay. Some of these commercial uses include solar cells, LED lighting, and semiconductor lasers. Dr. Alar Resnick, a physics professor at Lincoln University, says the technology is a vital part of medical imaging.
Currently, diagnosis is based on imaging, so it's much better to diagnose if you can image or visualize the disease, right? So all imaging detectors are based on semiconductors.
Resnick says institutions like Lincoln University and the Regional Research Institute help to bring this week-long conference to the city.
A well-known member of the Thunder Bay Broadcasting Community has died. Ron Bottis passed away this weekend at St. Joseph's Hospice. Bottis, for many years, was a highly popular announcer on CKPR radio. He was also very active in front of the cameras, serving as host as the long-running quiz show Reach for the Top and the annual Mother's Day CF Telethon. Ron was also active in the local musical community, performing for years with the band Stone Ridge, and was well-known in the local construction industry. Ron Bottis was 71 years old.
Good friend to many of us here at Dougal Media. He'll be sadly missed. Our condolences to the Bottis family.
Turning to weather now. Matt, cloudy, chilly day. I'm getting pretty sick and tired of those clouds, let me tell you. Any sunshine in the forecast?
There is some sunshine in the forecast, Ryan, which is good news. The good news today, too, is that it didn't rain, right? We have to think of that as a positive as well right now. If you have a look at the radar today as well, we had that cloud cover that kept things cool for the most part today. A little bit unexpected. We expected to see a little bit more sunshine than we did without that sunshine. That's what kept things nice and cool in the city and for most parts of the region today. Having a look at what's happening across the region right now. Marathon, 16 degrees. Greenstone, 15. Nice temperatures along the North Shore, mostly cloudy skies as well, but again, they did see some sunshine. 15 down in Sault Ste. Marie as we have a look out west. Canora, 18 degrees, as is Fort Francis. The hotspot right now up in Big Trout Lake, 21 degrees. They're enjoying some temperatures up in the northern part of the region, but they are under some mostly cloudy skies up there. Here in the city today, we reached a high of 18. Again, mostly cloudy skies, a little bit of wind to speak of, but it gusted up to 20 kilometers an hour. Not too bad, but again, it was that cloud cover that kept things cool today. We should see that dissipate over the course of this week, but I'll have more details on that in just a little bit. Tonight, low, dropping down to 6 degrees tonight. It's going to be chilly. Might want to close those windows tonight. The good news is that this should be the last night that we're going to see temperatures drop that low. They're going to rise just a little bit, so things not going to be as chilly. We could see some fog moving in as well about 11 o'clock tonight. That will last until about the 5, 6 a.m. region. So again, keep that in mind if you're driving or going anywhere over the course of tonight. Wednesday, tomorrow, we're in this nice dome, this high-pressure system that's going to bring a lot of sunshine, as Ryan just mentioned as well. Going to bring some sunshine, going to bring some heat. Those thunderstorms are going to stay to the west of us, pass down through the United States, and hey, have to be happy about that. We're in that nice dome. We have some nice weather coming. I'll have more details on that coming up later in the news hour.
And we can hardly wait for it to arrive. All right, thanks very much, Matt. Well, the audit details from Pamela Wallen were finally released today. Details on that story and more for you as your news hour continues.
We found aspects of the Deloitte report very troubling.
The audit into Senator Pamela Wallen's expenses was finally made public today.
The Senate committee that went over the audit has ordered Wallen to repay tens of thousands of dollars, and she's become the fourth senator this year whose expenses have been referred to the RCMP. Julie Van Dusen has the details.
No sign of Senator Pam Wallen this morning as her fellow senators gathered to decide what to do with a damning audit of her travel expenses. They concluded it needed to be referred to the RCMP.
We found aspects of the Deloitte report very troubling.
Last night, Wallen made a statement calling the audit unfair, but promised to pay back all of the disputed money and then some.
I will pay back the full amount ordered by the committee, including interest.
The amount of ineligible expenses according to the audit is $121,348, of which Wallen has already reimbursed $38,000. A further amount, nearly $21,000, is subject to more scrutiny by the Senate. A key problem: Wallen's stopovers at her Toronto condo on her way to her home province of Saskatchewan. The Deloitte audit determined 75 out of 94 trips from Ottawa to Saskatchewan involve stopovers of one or more nights in Toronto. Some of these stopovers were unrelated to Senate business, and she also billed the Senate for some partisan events like this election rally in Saskatoon. Deloitte disallowed the $230 she charged the Senate for driving from her home in Wadena, Saskatchewan to the conservative event.
She sent in expense claims that said she was on Senate business. When they were reviewed, we found that in fact, some of them were not Senate business.
The audit also found inconsistencies in Wallen's electronic calendar submissions. She said she was told to change the calendar, but Senator David Dekatchek says not so.
What I told her to do was submit relevant material. Don't submit irrelevant material. That's all. That was her decision to make after that, what was relevant and what isn't.
Senator Gerald Comow, who sits as a conservative, was asked if Wallen could ever be welcomed back into the Tory fold.
Would you like to see her back?
We'll see what happens.
Liberal Senator George Fury says the past few months have been tough on the Senate.
Colleagues that I spoke to during the summer tell me that everywhere they go, they're being mocked.
In addition to all of the money that must be repaid, Pamela Wallen has been told that she can only bill the Senate for direct flights between Ottawa and Saskatchewan, and that all of her travel expenses will be closely monitored for a year. Julie Van Dusen, CBC News, Ottawa.
Protesters dissented on Toronto Police Headquarters today, still not satisfied with the force's response to the police shooting of a teenager on a streetcar. Ron Charles reports.
Today's rally shows just how strong the public outrage remains two weeks after this. The streetcar shooting of 18-year-old Sammy Yatim by a Toronto police officer. Yatim had a knife, but was alone on the streetcar when the officer shot at him nine times. Sammy Yatim's mother and sister showed up to the rally but said they are still too grief-stricken to talk. Today's rally is the second since the shooting, still attracting people shocked by the video.
To show support for a child who was killed, a young man that was killed, and I mean, I think everybody's seen the video, and there's no question that it was unwarranted.
I came to support the family because I feel very sorry about what happened to their child.
Toronto's police chief has already tried to respond to this public outrage. Yesterday, he took the extraordinary step of naming a retired judge to look into how and when his officers use force against people in emotional crisis.
I want to ensure that we take as thorough a look at this as possible.
The protesters did not seem to be convinced of that. They marched to Toronto's police headquarters and the monthly meeting of the city's Police Services Board, the politicians and civilians who oversee the fort.
Recommendations have been made.
Earlier at a news conference, family members of other people shot by police said they expect little from the chief's review.
You know, I look back at all the inquiries that happened before O'Brien's death, O'Brien's inquest that I spent many days in, and all the recommendations that came out of that inquest. And again, nothing was done.
Outside police headquarters, protesters continued to express their anger at what they call police excess. Ron Charles, CBC News, Toronto.
A horrific accident on a busy Toronto bus route. One person is dead following a serious bus crash in Uptown Toronto. The bus was stopped at an intersection when a cube van smashed into the transit vehicle. A woman was killed waiting to exit the bus. The crash also took out a telephone pole, briefly knocking out power to about 5,000 customers in the area.
The railway involved in the Lachmic Antique Disaster is losing its license. The Canadian Transportation Agency says the Montreal, Maine, and Atlantic Railway doesn't have enough third-party liability insurance, and it says MM&amp;A hasn't been able to prove that it can pay for it. The order is effective August 20th. At least 47 people were killed when the train derailed and exploded in a small eastern Quebec town. The agency's also said it will launch a review of its insurance rules this fall to ensure they're adequate for what it calls catastrophic events.
A prisoner released today in the Middle East. Israel has released dozens of Palestinian prisoners as part of a deal to resume peace talks. Protesters huddled outside a prison in central Israel before the release. They're demanding the government release Israeli prisoners instead. Earlier today, the country's High Court rejected an appeal by the protesters. Israel plans to free over 100 Palestinian inmates ahead of the US-led peace talks, which are scheduled to start tomorrow.
It's an argument many in this area will be familiar with. The debate over the grizzly bear hunt is back on in Alberta. It's been three years since the province listed grizzlies as a threatened species. Now, a project monitoring their activity has some thinking it's time to start hunting the bears again. Brian Labby has the story.
It's a routine Andrea Morehouse is getting used to. She's in charge of the grizzly bear monitoring project here in southwestern Alberta. She's headed into the woods but stops to point out a fresh bear track, possibly from a grizzly.
Some of the claw marks potentially in here.
Further up the path, she reaches tree number 805, which is wrapped in barbed wire. Morehouse collects a hair sample, one more piece of evidence that seems to show there are more grizzlies here.
I think it's exciting, yes.
Hundreds of these so-called rub sites have been set up in forested areas and for the first time on public and private property. They snag hair from the grizzlies, and DNA analysis is showing that the numbers have nearly tripled.
More than was previously estimated.
The last survey done in this area The last survey done in this area showed a population estimate of 51 grizzlies. The number now is at least 122.
That's the minimum number. It's not the population estimate. So the population estimate would be higher than that because certainly we didn't detect every single grizzly bear that used the area.
The numbers may or may not include grizzlies who visited this feed site last spring, an area that's used to draw bears away from nearby ranches, where the carnivores sometimes attack or feed on dead cattle. Ranchers are relieved to hear the survey numbers. They say it proves what they've known for a while.
They were seeing bears where they hadn't seen them before, in greater numbers than they'd seen them before.
Jeff Bechtel ranches in the Cardston area. He says the survey will likely renew the debate about bringing back the bear hunt. He believes hunting can play a limited role.
It wouldn't be open season on bears. I can't imagine that happening. You know, hopefully, there's a way to manage the overall population at a reasonable level and a way to manage bears that prove themselves to be habitual offenders.
Yep, there's some...
Morehouse's research will continue for another year before a decision is made on what to do with all these new visitors. Brian Labby, CBC News, near Pincher Creek.
Let's take a look at today's market activity now in Toronto. The TSX up 48 points to 12, 642. The Dow posted a 31-point gain, climbing to 15,451. The Nasdaq was up 14 points to 3,684. Canadian dollar closed at 96.68 cents US, that's down almost four tenths. Gold lost over $13 to fall to $1,320 an ounce. Oil was up 72 cents, 106.83 a barrel. As we move ever closer to a new academic year, interest in varsity sports at Lakehead As we move ever closer to a new academic year, interest in varsity sports at Lakehead University is ramping up. At one team, there's a lot of optimism surrounding, is the new University is ramping up. At one team, there's a lot of optimism surrounding, is the new LU basketball, women's basketball. LU basketball, women's basketball.
Yeah, they struggled last year, 7-9 record. They particularly had a tough time when Yeah, they struggled last year, 7-9 record. They particularly had a tough time when they matched up against bigger teams. So now, one of their offseason priorities is they matched up against bigger teams. So now, one of their offseason priorities is to add some muscle to their lineup. They feel they've done that with the addition of to add some muscle to their lineup. They feel they've done that with the addition of a couple of six-foot post players, Thunder Bay's Gillian Lavoie and Essa Jacobson of a couple of six-foot post players, Thunder Bay's Gillian Lavoie and Essa Jacobson of Grand Marais. Jacobson in particular is expected to battle for big minutes at the position, Grand Marais. Jacobson in particular is expected to battle for big minutes at the position, which was a bit of a revolving door last season. She does have some work to do, however, which was a bit of a revolving door last season. She does have some work to do, however, if she hopes to crack the starting lineup. if she hopes to crack the starting lineup. Last year's Thunder Wolves team relied primarily on speed and perimeter shooting with limited Last year's Thunder Wolves team relied primarily on speed and perimeter shooting with limited success, as they often found themselves outmuscled by bigger opponents. They're hoping first-year success, as they often found themselves outmuscled by bigger opponents. They're hoping first-year post Essa Jacobson can help change that this season. post Essa Jacobson can help change that this season.
That's what we need this year, is more size, and not only height, but also a little That's what we need this year, is more size, and not only height, but also a little more muscle in the post. more muscle in the post.
She just gives us that toughness, grit. Player's not afraid to use her elbows and She just gives us that toughness, grit. Player's not afraid to use her elbows and get on the floor. And she's solid, tough, strong, great rebounder. get on the floor. And she's solid, tough, strong, great rebounder.
Rebounding is arguably the strongest part of the Grand Marais, Minnesota natives' Rebounding is arguably the strongest part of the Grand Marais, Minnesota natives' game. She grabbed 1,444 of them at Cook County High School. That's a school record. She's game. She grabbed 1,444 of them at Cook County High School. That's a school record. She's the only player in school history with more than 1,000 points and 1,000 boards. In two the only player in school history with more than 1,000 points and 1,000 boards. In two years of junior college, she was two-time All-State, but that's against an admittedly years of junior college, she was two-time All-State, but that's against an admittedly lower level of competition. lower level of competition.
When I first came up here, I was like, well, it's faster and bigger and everyone's When I first came up here, I was like, well, it's faster and bigger and everyone's better. better.
And even during a brief offseason workout, Jacobson quickly realized she's got some And even during a brief offseason workout, Jacobson quickly realized she's got some things to improve upon if she hopes to make an impact in the CIS. things to improve upon if she hopes to make an impact in the CIS.
I think I'm strong, but I need to be more like finesse and get better with moves and I think I'm strong, but I need to be more like finesse and get better with moves and developing my game, I guess, in the post. developing my game, I guess, in the post.
A player still needs to get in shape a little bit, but when she gets there, she'll A player still needs to get in shape a little bit, but when she gets there, she'll be, you know, battling it out for that, probably for that starting position. be, you know, battling it out for that, probably for that starting position.
She's playing for a team that attempted and made more three-pointers than any other She's playing for a team that attempted and made more three-pointers than any other in the country last year. That, she says, should help her out offensively. in the country last year. That, she says, should help her out offensively.
It does a lot because even if I get stuck down low, I know I can depend on a shooter It does a lot because even if I get stuck down low, I know I can depend on a shooter outside. outside.
Now, if that inside game can develop and take some pressure off the Thunder Wolves Now, if that inside game can develop and take some pressure off the Thunder Wolves shooters, it will drastically improve the team's chances to once again become OUA playoff shooters, it will drastically improve the team's chances to once again become OUA playoff contenders. contenders. Former Lakehead Thunder Wolves assistant Jeremy Aduno has taken over the reins behind Former Lakehead Thunder Wolves assistant Jeremy Aduno has taken over the reins behind the bench of the Thunder Bay North Stars. It's Aduno's first head coaching job. He the bench of the Thunder Bay North Stars. It's Aduno's first head coaching job. He spoke after this weekend's open tryouts about putting together a roster and goals for the spoke after this weekend's open tryouts about putting together a roster and goals for the upcoming campaign. upcoming campaign.
I don't think our expectations right now are very specific. I think the biggest I don't think our expectations right now are very specific. I think the biggest thing right now is we want to identify the best talent here in Thunder Bay and in the thing right now is we want to identify the best talent here in Thunder Bay and in the region. I know my biggest objective, as well as my assistant Colin, and our management region. I know my biggest objective, as well as my assistant Colin, and our management and our ownership, you know, we obviously want to be competitive. Number one, you always and our ownership, you know, we obviously want to be competitive. Number one, you always want to be competitive, but we're also big on development. You know, we're all in it want to be competitive, but we're also big on development. You know, we're all in it for the same reason, where we want kids from Thunder Bay and regional kids to be able to for the same reason, where we want kids from Thunder Bay and regional kids to be able to develop and become better players, better people, and, you know, have the chance to develop and become better players, better people, and, you know, have the chance to move on to better opportunities. So I think that right now is our main expectation and move on to better opportunities. So I think that right now is our main expectation and goal coming this season. goal coming this season.
The team held tryouts over the weekend at Port Arthur Arena. All eligible returning The team held tryouts over the weekend at Port Arthur Arena. All eligible returning players also took part in the practices. The new head coach was impressed by the high players also took part in the practices. The new head coach was impressed by the high level of competition, considering many of the kids haven't had much ice time over the level of competition, considering many of the kids haven't had much ice time over the past few months. Aduno also spoke about his relationship with Trevor Lautowski, the past few months. Aduno also spoke about his relationship with Trevor Latowski, the former former NHLer who's now the head coach of the OHL's Sarnia Sting, and how that friendship NHLer who's now the head coach of the OHL's Sarnia Sting, and how that friendship can can help him in his new position. help him in his new position.
He is one of my best friends. He has been kind of my whole life. And actually, He is one of my best friends. He has been kind of my whole life. And actually, he was at the skate this morning. It was nice. He came out. And Nick Latta from Sarnia, he was at the skate this morning. It was nice. He came out. And Nick Latta from Sarnia, who's, you know, one of their top guys, also came out today. So that was kind of a treat who's, you know, one of their top guys, also came out today. So that was kind of a treat for some of our guys to see that. And, you know, I thank Nick and Trevor for making that for some of our guys to see that. And, you know, I thank Nick and Trevor for making that happen. But yeah, Trevor and I talk all the time, you know, about life and about happen. But yeah, Trevor and I talk all the time, you know, about life and about hockey. hockey. And it was kind of funny after the practice today. I think we both showed each And it was kind of funny after the practice today. I think we both showed each other other a couple drills that we like and started talking systems. We had to put a cork in a couple drills that we like and started talking systems. We had to put a cork in it before it got too late. But I think him and I will be in touch a lot this year, and it before it got too late. But I think him and I will be in touch a lot this year, and we'll definitely use each other as a resource. we'll definitely use each other as a resource.
Turning to baseball now, it was a rough summer for the Thunder Bay Border Cats. They Turning to baseball now, it was a rough summer for the Thunder Bay Border Cats. They posted their worst-ever second-half win total, finishing at 8-27, and recorded their fewest posted their worst-ever second-half win total, finishing at 8-27, and recorded their fewest overall wins, with just 21 for the season. Offensively, the team really wasn't that overall wins, with just 21 for the season. Offensively, the team really wasn't that bad, but as has been discussed at length over the past few months, their pitching bad, but as has been discussed at length over the past few months, their pitching simply awful. First-team manager Dan Holcomb discusses what he learned during his time simply awful. First-time manager Dan Holcomb discusses what he learned during his time in the Cats dugout and whether he might be back next season. in the Cats dugout and whether he might be back next season.
It feels great. I mean, I learned a lot. It's one of those things, you never know It feels great. I mean, I learned a lot. It's one of those things, you never know what you're going to learn. You think you're going to learn a lot of Xs and Os, and you're what you're going to learn. You think you're going to learn a lot of Xs and Os, and you're going to think you're going to learn tons about the game. And I'll tell you, you learn going to think you're going to learn tons about the game. And I'll tell you, you learn a lot about the guys. I mean, you learn a lot about players and how to motivate them. a lot about the guys. I mean, you learn a lot about players and how to motivate them. You learn a lot about, you know, how to, you know, get guys on a daily basis here to You learn a lot about, you know, how to, you know, get guys on a daily basis here to get ready to play a game. And, you know, it's one of those things you don't necessarily get ready to play a game. And, you know, it's one of those things you don't necessarily think of as an assistant, but, you know, that's the things you learn. And I can tell think of as an assistant, but, you know, that's the things you learn. And I can tell you, I think our guys got better throughout the year, and, you know, it definitely shows you, I think our guys got better throughout the year, and, you know, it definitely shows offensively. offensively. I would love to be. I love the Thunder Bay city. I mean, everybody here's been great I would love to be. I love the Thunder Bay city. I mean, everybody here's been great to me. Brad and Brian have been tremendous. The Jorgensen family has been awesome. But to me. Brad and Brian have been tremendous. The Jorgensen family has been awesome. But I know that's a conversation I'll have to have with Brad and Brian throughout the course I know that's a conversation I'll have to have with Brad and Brian throughout the course of the next week or so, and kind of see where they're at and see where they want to take of the next week or so, and kind of see where they're at and see where they want to take the program. the program.
There was a rare celebration in Moscow for Canadian track and field fans today. Medal-winning There was a rare celebration in Moscow for Canadian track and field fans today. Medal-winning performances have brought new hope for Canada on the world athletics scene. Peter Armstrong performances have brought new hope for Canada on the world athletics scene. Peter Armstrong explains. explains.
For the first time in a long time, a Canadian in the hunt for a medal at the World Championships. For the first time in a long time, a Canadian in the hunt for a medal at the World Championships. Taft athlete Brienne Tyson Eaton had a shot at gold. In the stands, her nervous entourage Taft athlete Brienne Tyson Eaton had a shot at gold. In the stands, her nervous entourage included her husband, American Ashton Eaton, who won gold in the men's decathlon just included her husband, American Ashton Eaton, who won gold in the men's decathlon just yesterday. yesterday. After a final heat in which eight of 10 racers posted a personal best, the 24-year-old After a final heat in which eight of 10 racers posted a personal best, the 24-year-old Canadian would have to settle for silver. A well-earned, long-dreamt-of result at the Canadian would have to settle for silver. A well-earned, long-dreamt-of result at the pinnacle of world racing. Only two other Canadian women have medaled at an outdoor pinnacle of world racing. Only two other Canadian women have medaled at an outdoor event. Tyson Eaton now joins the elite ranks of women's racing alongside Perdita Feliciani event. Tyson Eaton now joins the elite ranks of women's racing alongside Perdita Feliciani and Priscilla Lopez-Schlip. She's still upset she fell short of gold, but as she watched and Priscilla Lopez-Schlip. She's still upset she fell short of gold, but as she watched the Canadian flag hoisted into second position, Tyson Eaton says she started getting emotional. the Canadian flag hoisted into second position, Tyson Eaton says she started getting emotional.
You know, you think of all the hard work you did, but I guess you think of your country, You know, you think of all the hard work you did, but I guess you think of your country, your family, how many people are probably watching at home, how excited they are. your family, how many people are probably watching at home, how excited they are.
Her win, also Canada's win, and not the only one. Damian Warner took bronze in Her win, also Canada's win, and not the only one. Damian Warner took bronze in the men's decathlon. Both young, promising athletes, both now considered serious medal the men's decathlon. Both young, promising athletes, both now considered serious medal hopefuls in the next Summer Olympics. hopefuls in the next Summer Olympics.
I think this is a real breakthrough moment. I think this is a real breakthrough moment.
Mike Smith knows all about breakthroughs. It's been 20 years since he was climbing Mike Smith knows all about breakthroughs. It's been 20 years since he was climbing the podium himself. He says this is a moment Canada has been waiting for. the podium himself. He says this is a moment Canada has been waiting for.
Well, it really is an exciting time. To have two Canadian athletes on the podium Well, it really is an exciting time. To have two Canadian athletes on the podium at a World Championships is a rare thing, and it's many, many years in between since at a World Championships is a rare thing, and it's many, many years in between since we've seen it. we've seen it.
And there's no question this country needed a boost. Canada's currently 14th in And there's no question this country needed a boost. Canada's currently 14th in the medal count, just ahead of Botswana. But success like this brings new attention, the medal count, just ahead of Botswana. But success like this brings new attention, new sponsorship money, and new fans to the sport, just what athletes here need with new sponsorship money, and new fans to the sport, just what athletes here need with two years to go before the next Summer Olympics. Peter Armstrong, CBC News, Toronto. two years to go before the next Summer Olympics. Peter Armstrong, CBC News, Toronto. Meanwhile, the Lakehead University running team is well-represented at the Canada Summer Meanwhile, the Lakehead University running team is well-represented at the Canada Summer Games. Travis Rosk running for Saskatchewan and Connor Maguire running for PEI have qualified Games. Travis Rosk running for Saskatchewan and Connor Maguire running for PEI have qualified for the 1,500-meter final. Maguire will also run in the men's 5,000-meter race on Friday. for the 1,500-meter final. Maguire will also run in the men's 5,000-meter race on Friday. Danielle Teal running for Saskatchewan will be in the 5,000-meter women's race, also Danielle Teal running for Saskatchewan will be in the 5,000-meter women's race, also set for Friday. set for Friday. To the MLB, where the Minnesota Twins have reportedly placed Canadian first baseman To the MLB, where the Minnesota Twins have reportedly placed Canadian first baseman Justin Justin Morneau on revocable waivers, according to several media sources. Any team that Morneau on revocable waivers, according to several media sources. Any team that claims claims him will have a shot. A short window of time to finalize a trade with the Twins, him will have a shot. A short window of time to finalize a trade with the Twins, or Minnesota or Minnesota could pull Morneau back and keep him in the lineup. The Twins can also could pull Morneau back and keep him in the lineup. The Twins can also let the claiming let the claiming team keep Morneau without any compensation, should they so choose. 32-year-old team keep Morneau without any compensation, should they so choose. 32-year-old is hitting is hitting 262 this season with 14 home runs and 67 RBI. His numbers are up in August 262 this season with 14 home runs and 67 RBI. His numbers are up in August after slumping after slumping in July. There are a couple of teams that are rumored to be interested. in July. There are a couple of teams that are rumored to be interested. So a little So a little bit of a fall from grace for Justin Morneau. bit of a fall from grace for Justin Morneau.
Big contract numbers attached to Morneau. I think he has one more year to go on that Big contract numbers attached to Morneau. I think he has one more year to go on that deal, so tough decision if any team wants to pick him up. deal, so tough decision if any team wants to pick him up.
Injury issues too, right? Injury issues too, right? Yeah, injury concerns are really what derailed him. Yeah, injury concerns are really what derailed him. Thanks, Banaz. Tonight on Global Thunder Bay, a double dip of NCIS. And on CKPR, Rick Thanks, Banaz. Tonight on Global Thunder Bay, a double dip of NCIS. And on CKPR, Rick goes to bat at the Women's Fast Pitch Championship. There you go, here's TeleTalk. goes to bat at the Women's Fast Pitch Championship. There you go, here's TeleTalk.
Tonight on Global Thunder Bay, starting at 8, it's NCIS. And Ziva questions her father's Tonight on Global Thunder Bay, starting at 8, it's NCIS. And Ziva questions her father's motives when he unexpectedly visits. Then on NCIS Los Angeles, Kenzie and Deeks investigate motives when he unexpectedly visits. Then on NCIS Los Angeles, Kenzie and Deeks investigate the theft of a cartel boss's body. And at 10 on Haven, Audrey tries to determine the the theft of a cartel boss's body. And at 10 on Haven, Audrey tries to determine the cause of a series of incidents involving butterflies. Over on CKPR Thunder Bay at cause of a series of incidents involving butterflies. Over on CKPR Thunder Bay at 7:30, grab a cuppa with the gang from Coronation Street. Then at 8, Rick goes to bat in the 7:30, grab a cuppa with the gang from Coronation Street. Then at 8, Rick goes to bat in the Women's Fast Pitch Championship on the Rick Mercer Report. At 8:30 on 22 Minutes, it's Women's Fast Pitch Championship on the Rick Mercer Report. At 8:30 on 22 Minutes, it's Don Cherry's Game Day Thoughts on Republicans and Democrats. And at 9, Bobby helps out when Don Cherry's Game Day Thoughts on Republicans and Democrats. And at 9, Bobby helps out when a jealous ex-husband kidnaps Connor on Arctic Air. TeleTalk is brought to you by Points a jealous ex-husband kidnaps Connor on Arctic Air. TeleTalk is brought to you by Points at traffic ticket specialists. at traffic ticket specialists.
Well, it's a little bit chilly here and a little bit cloudy, but luckily, there's no rain to speak of. Not the case in other parts of the country, Matt.
Definitely not. Holly, some unsettled weather across, right across the country, from the west coast to the east coast. I'll get to that in just a minute. Thunder Bay today, we did see a high of 18 degrees, mostly cloudy skies, as I mentioned earlier. Those cloudy skies kept things rather cool. Our highway was supposed to be, supposed to get up a little bit more into the 20s today, but that cloud cover kept things rather chilly. As we have a look at what's happening across the country. Vancouver, 22 degrees. Prince George at 26, beautiful skies there. But meteorologists are tracking a storm that's about 70 kilometers southwest of Old Alberta right now. So Edmonton, 23, and Calgary at 25. But that storm system, there's all kinds of warnings through northeastern British Columbia, down into the city of Calgary, all down through Alberta, into the southwest parts of Saskatchewan. Hail, possible hail, damaging winds. So that could be some unsettled weather for them early, like later evening tonight. As we move into the prairie, Saskatoon 26, Regina 24. Beautiful skies there as well. They are seeing some sunshine. We have a look at Winnipeg right now as well, 22 degrees. Churchill, 25. Lucky Churchill. They are up in the mid-20s right now. As we move into southern Ontario, Toronto, 16 degrees, mostly cloudy skies in southern Ontario right now. Ottawa, they just had a rainfall warning end for them. They are going to see some showers tonight as well and into this evening, as will Quebec City as well. They're mostly cloudy skies, but they're going to see some rain for this evening as well. Moving into the Maritimes, Halifax, seeing some rain. Also, in Charlottetown, cloudy skies. There's another rainfall warning just north up here in Quebec that could see some more unsettled weather. And that warning continues into St. John's, into the Avalon Peninsula. They're going to have a rainfall warning right now, and that will continue for the next couple of hours. So again, some unsettling weather, as Holly just mentioned, too, across the country.